Good evening, Chatham. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and the Council on Aging Board of Directors of January 7, 2025. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. I don't see anybody in the room. I don't see anybody on the, in the internet, so I'll proceed. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023, signing of the acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board and Council on Aging Board of Directors is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Before we establish a quorum and open both meetings, I want to note the passing of two Chatham first citizens of sorts. First, Mr. Andrew Sifler passed away on December 9. He served on the Municipal Building Needs Committee from 1998 through 2001, the Charter Review Committee from 2007 to 2009, and the Capitol Projects Review Committee from 2010 to 2013. We also lost Ron Scroyle. I hope, Scroyle, sorry about that, passed on December 19. He served for 30 years as a Chatham firefighter, rising through the ranks and retiring as deputy chief. If we could observe a moment of silence in their memory. We'll open the Select Board meeting first. Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
And Mr. Shell is present, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Burke to open the Council on Aging Board of Directors meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you need.
Present.
Present.
Stan.
Present.
Anne.
Present.
Laura.
Present.
And the chair is present. We have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you. So this evening, I'll just open briefly. This evening's meeting is going to take place really in two parts. Oh, I'll tell them what the meeting's about, and then we'll go to public announcements. Three parts. We'll have public announcements in a minute, but the meat of the meeting is to discuss the proposed renovations to the CFAL, and that will be first of a joint meeting of the boards. We'll have presentations from Mr. Raiber and the staff, and then the boards will have some conversation, and then we will go to the second part of the meeting, which is basically a public forum on what you've seen and what you've heard from the board. So with that sort of introduction, let me come back to the public announcements and invite any public announcements or agenda requests. First, from the Select Board, any from the COA Board, any from the public.
No, Mr. Chair.
And I don't see any here in the room, so now we can go to our joint meeting and our presentations, and I believe that's coming from, do you want to start, Mr. Whalen?
Yeah, let's give a very, very brief overview. The chair went through the structure of the meeting, so Terry Whalen, Projects and Operations Administrator. So in your package, you had a staff report, basically with some background information on some of the chronology, on the meetings proceeding, this meeting tonight, to get to where we are tonight, and Kurt Raiber, architect, is going to be going through that in some detail. So again, just pointing out that, you know, we've been continuing on the process, and really, this is a follow-up from meetings and discussion, excuse me, going back to March and the end of June of 2024. And with that, I will actually turn it over to Kurt, because I think he's going to hit all items that we have in the staff report. We're going to have, you know, we'll be available for questions, and then when Kurt's done, I'm going to turn it over to Leah to do a presentation on the relationship of the proposal to the, to meeting the needs of the Council on Aging Department and the Center for Active Living as a facility.
Good evening.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, everyone. Kurt Raiber from Catalyst Architecture and Interiors in Yarmouthport. Glad to be back with you, excuse me. We're here to kind of report on some refinements of the proposed plans at the CFAL. After we were here the last time, we heard some comments and kind of wrote down some wish list items and went back to the drawing board and refined the plan. I'll kind of revisit the old schemes in a few minutes, but you might remember that we color-coded them, and there was sort of like a yellow plan, green plan, blue plan. And I think everybody kind of centered around the blue scheme, which was not the biggest, didn't have the large addition on the left side, but was really concentrating on maximizing the potential of the existing building with some modest additions in several places. And so this is the rendering that our office created. I think if I, you could, you cannot see my cursor. Okay. Well, I'll just describe it. Oh, is that? Ah, yeah. The first usually shows up. How do I do that? Not there. Okay. Well, we'll just kind of describe it quickly. To the left side of the image is the sort of existing gable end, which is the multipurpose room on the first floor. This is used for dining, luncheons, other things. Above it, on the second floor, is another multipurpose room, used oftentimes for AV presentations. Ah, perfect. Top button. Top button. So it has a shed dormer on the left, far-left side of the building, but what we wanted to do is sort of maximize the use of these two rooms. So this is a proposed addition that stretches the multipurpose room on the first floor, and then we add this dormer on the right side of the second-floor space, which really does make that room a whole lot more usable, because you may recall that there's, you walked too far into that corner, you'll knock your head on the ceiling. Then, at the front entrance, we've created a new sort of front entry with steps, a small little garden envisioned there, accessible ramp, accessible parking, but then there's a conference room at the far-right end of the second floor, and a small meeting room, which is sort of internal with no windows. So we're proposing a long shed dormer there to make those spaces a lot more usable. And with that, we'll just kind of get into the plan. This first page is the existing conditions plan, and encircled in red clouds are the columns, lolly columns, that kind of obstruct flexible use of these spaces, and the renovations and the estimates that we're showing tonight will remove those items. And again, it's just for a sense of familiarity. Again, on the first-floor level, there's a column in the center of the multipurpose room here, and then this is the existing layout of the office admin area, which we intend to improve. On the second floor, this is the area we'd be adding the dormer and getting rid of this little section of roof, and similarly, over in this area, we'd be opening the roof and making this totally internal space a lot more habitable. Here's, this is the first floor, and on the left side of the building is a new addition, which is again, the, basically increasing the width of the multipurpose room by about eight feet, and then behind it is where the existing deck is now behind the kitchen area. We propose a three-story addition there with a new enclosed stair for safety and fire egress, and then this space on all three levels becomes a kind of a storage or, you know, useful space. On the second floor, it could even be an office or a small meeting area. In the front of the building, we have sort of a new storage room dedicated to the multipurpose room, new coatroom, a new vestibule, and then this is sort of that portico ramp and small garden area in the front of the building. On the left side, we're proposing kind of a complete overhaul of the office space to further divide that into smaller dedicated offices and then build a true reception desk. In this plan, we've actually removed one office from this area and built a different enclosure, a different path to the lower level, egress to the, or ingress and egress from the basement level. This is the proposed second floor, and the yellow highlights the additions. It's a little slow reacting. Okay. This is the building elevations, and again, we show the front entrance, the expansion on this side, so the existing building. Oh, got caught up with me. So right here, this dimension line here shows the proposed length of the addition on this end, but the, and then the addition in the front, and the dormer here and here. This is the north-side, right-side view. Now, on the back of the building, pretty much the same thing here. This is the existing elevator. We propose a new portico here, because this is the entrance into the lower level, and if the lower level becomes the part-time home for the senior day program, the parking lot here on the left, which we previously infilled with an addition, will remain. So the parking on that side will remain, the driveway will remain there, and in the site plan, we show that we've got enough room to have the shuttle bus come down and let people, you know, onboard and offboard the shuttle bus right in this location. There'll be a little walkway to a covered portico over that entrance. This area right here is an addition, three stories high, and this last part of the addition is that three-story stair. This is the site plan, and as I mentioned, the left side, we're going to, that parking lot's going to remain. We've cross-hatched an area down here, which will be dedicated parking space for the shuttle bus, but also a place where that bus can maneuver and turn. And then this is a little terrace that's right next to this covered portico entrance to the lower level and the senior day program. The yellow here shows the addition footprint on the left side. The blue is the addition in the front, and we're showing the kind of little, perhaps a small garden area, new accessible parking. Most importantly, the existing parking lot over here has sort of two driveways through it existing. There's 22 total spaces on the site today, and we propose improving this whole area, which will include parking, paving, striping, lighting, drainage, of course, and a couple of tree islands, but with the new handicap spots, parking across the front, we can get to 47 spaces, we believe. This is the existing driveway that goes back to the condo minimi, the condominium association in the rear, but the count is based on the number of parking spaces that would be entirely on the town parcel. So here, I wanted to show you, sort of, we put a slide together that sort of recaps where we've been, and this is the slide in total, but if I advance, we could focus on one section at a time. Way back in March, we looked at a Concept 1A, which was a kind of a modest, and B was a little bit more subtle addition, the addition of the front. Option 2 was what became the, soon after, the yellow scheme, or the addition of a new senior day program, you know, a very large addition to the left side of the building. And going back and looking at those plans, the existing building plus a small little footprint increase resulted in a building of about 8,250 gross square feet. The big scheme was just over 12,000 feet. At that point in March, we really hadn't done any estimating. We were just here to kind of show those concepts. We returned in June, and we had a color-coded plan and a color-coded budget page. The orange items on the budget were sort of the base building improvements. They included some structural repairs, elevator upgrade, HVAC upgrade, et cetera. Really didn't change the building footprint or didn't really maximize or create any increased program space. 1A became the green scheme, and it considered the existing building plus very modest addition, and that was the 8,250 square feet. The blue option added 610 gross square feet, and again, just, just over 8,600 square feet. The yellow option was embellished and changed a little bit, but again, it was a total of 4,245 gross square, gross square feet of area being added, and we identified budgets for each of those schemes that varied, you know, from just over a million to just over 7.5 million. At that point, we all kind of took notes and listened to what was missing, and we came back, and the plan I've just gone through with you is a version of 1B or the blue scheme with a little bit of more stretching and a little bit more area, and tried to maximize the amount of usable space in the building. So again, this slide really compares that blue option and the budget at the time of 3.36 million, and the refined schematic design. We ended up with a, an addition of 2,156 square feet, a total building area of 10,191 square feet. We've refined the budget with our estimator, and this is the, not the construction cost, but this is the overall, projected overall cost at 4.665. This page kind of summarizes our cost estimating, and our estimator kind of took the, the construction cost, and we called that the raw construction costs, this is without the general contractors' markup and bond and permits and insurances, et cetera. So the raw cost of the renovation space was one number, and then they treated the addition as another number. And then we added to it the raw cost of just the site features, which is the parking lot, the site lighting, paving, landscaping. We carried a lump sum for improvements in the garden areas. So to that subtotal at 2.706 million, we added the contract modifiers. These are project contingency, because it's very early on, a design contingency, because the estimator, you know, had to make some assumptions, and he also assumed that there's some things that we haven't added or haven't thought to kind of define in the design to date. And then we, finally, we carried an escalation of another 5%, assuming that this project would be designed, bid, built in a one-year's time from today. So the estimating is today numbers, the escalation and the other modifiers kind of push it up to 3.247. Once the design is refined and, you know, the project goes to bid, ultimately, a general contractor will be assigning his overhead general conditions. We agreed with the estimator to carry 10% here, profit number, an insurance number, a bond number. We zeroed out the permit fee, assuming that the town would treat itself nicely and exempt those fees, and we got to this 3.831 number. Now, that's not the 4.6 number, and we have, you know, background information in a lot of detail, which I believe is in your packets. We don't have to go through it all, but this is just basically how the estimator looks at every portion of the building, every room, every task, and really just still summarize, brings it down to one big number. So if I go back, oh. The summary page, the, the total project page isn't, doesn't seem to be there. I hope it was in the. We lost the slide in translation somehow. Should I plug that in? It might not be in there, it'd be there, but shoot.
We can pull it off the web. Just give me a second here. So they do have that in the package, the complete.
Oh, okay.
The complete, yeah. I guess maybe when you're having. I guess I'll turn this off for a second here.
It's a little jumpy.
Yeah. When we had a PDF and we exported it to a PowerPoint, we're missing a slide there. That's what you can.
That's the page, yeah?
Yep, there it is.
Thank you, Terry, for saving me here.
It's still projecting the other one. Do I need to share the screen?
Yeah, I'm trying to share right now.
Gotcha. I'm surprised it's not projecting.
These are showing two different things. It's right.
We have it up.
I think that's, I think I have it up.
Do you want to close out of the PowerPoint?
Okay. So that's on their computer.
Okay. So that's the PowerPoint again. Let's minimize that. I'm not sure if we're looking at errors or is. I think it's us.
It's back on us.
That's back on us.
Okay. I think that's me.
All right, but we're, we're trying to project the, what I've got on the web view. So this is not projecting what we have on the screen here.
Okay, give him the mouse. Thank you.
Do we need to close the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir. So it's just, and now we'll go to, ah, just click. Brilliant. Okay. Just click on this. Yeah, it should go away.
So just, you've got your functionality now.
Yep. Perfect. All right, here we are. So this is the sort of overall project budget page, and again, we recap the raw construction numbers, the modifiers and escalators, and in here, the contract markups, so this is the same as it was in the estimator's report, but to it, we add here at the bottom, other soft costs that the project would incur, some before construction, some during construction. The OPM services, because the project is over a million and a half dollars, professional fees, which includes architects, landscape, structural, MEP, civil engineering is on the next line, geotechnical soil investigations, which is, you know, sort of a modest number compared to everything else, construction testing, online procurement, there are expenses with that process now. Oftentimes, we carry a generator, but the building already has one. We did carry a number for IT improvements and other technic, technology updates in the building, and we carried a pretty significant number for furniture and equipment. We have a small fee, because sometimes the utility companies have some sort of fee that they charge back miscellaneous expenses. So the subtotal with a 5% contingency adds another 833,000 to the previously known 3.831 number. That's how we got to the, the 4.665 all-in project budget for the refined or improved blue scheme. And I'm sure there's a lot of questions, but I think we were going to have Leah do a presentation and then come back and.
Yep.
Pat, can.
Kurt. May I?
Let's let Leah make her presentation.
Before I go, before Leah talks, I want to know.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
If you could show the, the lower-level slide, because that will, when Leah talks, it will be important. We didn't get that slide with the new supportive of Delta Health.
That guy. That way we'll all be in one software. There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this, this dropped out of the previous presentation as well, in the, in the PowerPoint software, but, so this slide was the lower level. Again, columns removed in this multipurpose room, and also a significant structural column removed from this. These dashed lines in both these areas indicate the installation of a new steel beam overhead, new accessible restrooms to serve the functions down there. This is that covered portico and walkway out to the drop-off area, and again, this is within a new foundation, but it is the egress stair, new equipment storage, because the CFAL has a, an equipment lending program for anybody that needs crutches, walker, wheelchair, other, other accessible tools. And then this storage room, and when we met last week, we talked about maybe, yeah, taking a doorway direct from this room so that sports equipment or other things that this room might be used for yoga mats, et cetera, could be stored directly into that room. So that's just a function of moving that door over, and we'll come back to the plans and the budget after Leah's presentation.
That's the one. Ah, it's not the one. Monstrosity. Don't see it. And the top. Leah Lacrosse, Director of Community Services. And I thought that I would just add a little dimension to everything that Kurt presented with some pictures of how it looks today, so that you could maybe get an even better idea of what he was discussing. Sorry. So by the numbers, in 2024, we had 1,487 members, or 23% of Chatham's year-round population of 6,607 residents, which I checked today to make sure that that was still the case. And those people signed, had a total of 4,519 sign-ins for programs. So we've really grown a lot. Our programs have grown, we're seeing a lot more people. That picture there is our Chatham Better Together group, who were very happy to depose for that. We've also grown as a team. In 2022, which is the year I chose, because that's the year I started, we started with a director, an outreach coordinator, a program coordinator, department coordinator, which is the one that does payroll and invoicing and runs our transportation, and then a department assistant who answers the phone. Today, we have all of those, but we also have an adult behavioral health clinician, a day program director. We have one program aide hired right now and hoping to get our second one. I did not put the child. We also have, hopefully we'll have soon, a behavioral health clinician that focuses on the youth of the town, but that person, in fairness, will be housed at the community center, so I didn't add them. But really, we'll be a staff of 10 for this. So when Kurt talked about the multipurpose room, we call it the dining room, because that's what it has always been. I'm trying to figure out this pointer here. Top button, yeah, it's not working. It seems to be the theme tonight. So I'll just talk. On the left-hand side is the dining room. We use this picture because it didn't have... That's why. Thank you.
Top button.
Top button. Okay, so this is the dining room without furniture in it, and I used this picture because it shows you the full length. You can see right in the middle of the floor is the column that makes it a lot more difficult than you think it is. We can't, we have to do our tables around it, as they show here for one of our programs. That's apple juice, by the way. It's not champagne, just so you know. So people are right up against those columns, and for anyone who's participated in any of our full lunches or full programs, you'll know that the people, as you can see right here, sit back to back. So while that looks like a really big space, it's really not. It's a lot smaller when it's filled, and the maximum that we can have in there is 30 people. So that's only 30 people in that room, if that. So this is the other program room that Kurt was talking to, which is right over the dining room. This is called the media lounge. And what this is, through a generous donation from the Friends, they refurnished this room so that we could do computer classes. It very quickly became not only that, but an additional program room, since it's the only other one in the building. Again, if you see it, when you walk into it, it looks like a very big room, but if you notice here, so virtually from this corner all the way down makes that space, all that wonderful space, unusable. Sometimes we have a black curtain hanging here going across so that people don't hit their heads, which we have to warn people all the time. So we use it for much smaller programs, because really, as you can see, this is really the usable space. It looks big, but again, we had a bingo event upstairs in that room, and it shows you how few people are in that room and how quickly it fills up. Sorry, switching between both. This is, this is the, tough pictures here, but these are, this is our basement that you saw right now. So right here is the main big space in the basement. You see those two columns right there. Also, we don't have any storage space. This is our storage right now. We have absolutely no storage upstairs whatsoever. So this is the other side of the building. When you come down the stairs and take a left, there's a program space right now that's currently only used for foot care. Right here, behind these walls, are all of our durable medical equipment. I don't know if you can tell right here, but that's just a, almost like a chalkboard that we use to partition that off for storage. And then in here, and when Kurt talked about the addition of the bathroom, the two bathrooms on the lower level so that the day program can have space down there, this is where the two bathrooms would go. This is what we refer to as the exercise room. It has never been used since I've been there, because as you can see, the columns, you can see the ceilings are way too low and there's no airflow. There's not sufficient airflow, I should say, and those two windows need to be brought. This space doesn't look like it, but it is huge. And with the proposed renovations, this whole space would be dedicated to the day program, the supportive day program, where they would have their restrooms. The door that Kurt talked about with the covered portico is right here, and so they would have their own entrance and exit. The director and staff would have office space right over here, and it would fulfill their needs and would be able to open for the program four days a week. So that's all, that's the presentation there, but I wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to see this part of our story. You can see from the slides I just showed you that our need for additional space is both real and tangible. Currently, our existing space does not allow us to include everyone who wants to participate in our programs. For every program that's held in our dining room, we have to limit participants to a total of 30, which for our most popular programs often leaves us with a waitlist of 10 to 15 people. For our media lounge, which is our only other program space, we can have a maximum of 15. Our lower level contains the most space but is unusable due to the absence of restrooms on that floor, which is an ADA requirement, multiple columns and low ceiling height. In Mr. Rhaber's thoughtful approach to this design, we feel that he's helped shape a plan that addresses these most pressing issues. With the proposed renovation, we are confident that we will gain the necessary space to open up the programs and services to everyone in the older adult community, eliminating the need for number restrictions and waitlists. We will have the storage space we desperately need and a place to put our durable medical equipment that's loaned out almost on a daily basis. Additionally, our brand-new Riders Cove respite program, the Adult Supportive Day Program, will have a beautifully renovated space on the lower level, complete with a fully accessible covered entrance adjacent to the parking lot where our transportation vehicles park. This space will be fully dedicated to the program, complete with office space and storage, allowing us to expand to four days a week instead of two. Removing the day program from the dining room will also allow us to add more program in the dining area. Finally, our dedicated team of staff will have sufficient workspace, and we will once again have a conference room to hold meetings in. That is not true today. I know Kurt pointed out the conference room, but we had to give up our conference room for office space as we expanded our staff. Each week, we receive heartfelt letters from our participants expressing gratitude for the care and support we provide. Many share how we've given them a reason to get up in the morning in a place where they feel they truly belong. As we've experienced tremendous growth, a functional accessible space is no longer a wish, but an essential need for a town that so thoughtfully cares for its residents. So thank you for your time, attention, and consideration.
Yeah, so I'm just going to pull up the materials again, so with, for question, again, sorry for the technical, minor technical glitch here. Something got literally lost in the electronic translation, so apologize for that.
So Terry, that concludes staff's presentation?
Yeah, so that does conclude our presentation, sorry. And then, so again, we can access the, any of the documents here for the, and a couple of pages that were not in the electronic presentation.
So I'm going to, I'm going to open it up in the first instance for comments, questions, whatever, from, I think we'll do it as a board here. So either side, Corey, go ahead.
I'll take two very, one real quick and easy, soft one, and then a little more, I don't know if it'll be more appropriate now or later, but I'll ask it and you can tell me how to do it up.
Go ahead.
One real quick one is, on the overall budget, just for clarification, line item number 28 and line item 33 are both listed as online bidding and procurement expenses at 2,000. Are those redundant or are those two separate? I know it's not going to make or break the budget, but just for clarification. Line item 28, line item 33.
Yeah, I don't, again, I think that might be just a double count there.
So we're working in the right direction. Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right.
You got any more?
Did I really sharpen my pencil? All right. The second question, and I don't know if we want to get into this now or a little bit later, is obviously, addressing this with the remodeling and some additions and all these proposals, do we want to talk a little bit about how we're going to tackle this? What is the process of tackling this while having the operations of CFAL in process? And how does that, how does that plan look?
Sure, and I think I'll defer to Kurt, but that is, and again, in the staff report, I neglected to mention that earlier. So again, that is the intent here, to do the project as expeditiously as possible, and I'll let Kurt speak to that scheduling.
The committee we worked with talked about sort of, can you do this in a phased way? Can you live there? You could, but it would be difficult to elongate the construction phase, and with it, the management fees and everything that go along with that. So we think that the cleanest, fastest way to tackle this renovation addition project is to temporarily relocate the CFAL services to another location. We talked about the best time of year to do that, which would be sort of October through May. And I know that the town, Leah and Terry, have been kind of working on a scheme to use space at the community center for those services. So they could talk a little bit more about that, but we think the best way, the safest way to build this project is to vacate.
Yeah, and if I can, I think Kurt, you were estimating the construction schedule is, you know, for the actual construction to be nine, nine months. So, and there's, you know, some design and pre-work that needs to be done, so we're talking about a 12-month process right now.
Right. So that, we think that the construction process could be done in nine months. We would specify that, and I think with the right contractor, very doable. Stan, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up a minute ago. No? Okay. Dean?
Thank you. I just want to follow up on Corey's question about the displacement. And I guess this question probably is directed to the Director of Community Services or other staff. What is the plan for carrying on programs, including the adult daycare, while construction is going on at 193 Stony Hill Road? I know we've talked about the community center. How is that going to work? How is that going to impact programs at the community center or the use of the community center by third parties?
I've also asked Amy Howell, Deputy Director of Community Services for the Recreation and Beaches Division. Amy and Terry and I have talked at length about this, and we think we've come up with a plan. Make no mistake, it's going to be very tight in there, but we also prioritized programs, and the day program is, of course, the number one priority. Amy has been so kind as to designate a room that would be for the day program, only no other programs during the duration of time would take place. And it has ample storage space, it has ample room, and that would be, that would be great. The staff would be sharing offices. There's currently no office space available over there except for one office that is for the youth clinician upon hire, but I'm going to let Amy address the most of it, what she's come up with, and what we've all come up with, and how it will affect programs at the community center.
Would the adult daycare program be in compliance with state requirements?
Yes.
Conducted that way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, we checked all that. The only thing is, there's no kitchen at the community center, but we've, we have workarounds on that, too. And so we're, I'll let her address. There's a room right next door, the serving room, that has a refrigerator that would be ours to use. We also have crock pots. We're not required to serve hot lunches. They can be lunches, as long as they're nutritious, and a snack, so it's, it's all within compliance.
And where will the COA staff be housed?
We will all be sharing offices with Amy's staff.
Thank you. Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, just to expand on what Leah said, so, you know, it's just preliminary, what we've talked about, you know, in the hopes that this does progress. So we feel that we can fit the majority of the CFAL's programs over there. You know, it will impact, you know, how the community center is run, it will impact outside organizations, committees, and the room space available. So there will be an impact to the community, but it's expected. You know, we're moving two buildings into one. So, but for us, you know, I think as a staff and as a whole, we're just going to do our best possible to fit as many programs as we can into the, into the community center alongside of our programs. And I think that there's just going to have to be a lot of flexibility on our end, on their end, and on the community's end. And I think if, if that can happen, and, you know, and we are all going to work together, we will do the best that we can for those nine months, knowing that there's kind of a light at the end of the tunnel.
So there might be some displacement of programs or uses of the building?
Yes, absolutely.
By third, by third parties? They might have to conduct meetings elsewhere.
Yes.
That's correct.
And our goal is really, we've, we've kind of stopped, you know, we haven't accepted reservations past, you know, June, because we kind of want to wait and see what's going to happen with this. And then, you know, this progresses, it passes, you know, the next step would be to get it out there to the community and especially the people that do regularly reserve the community center on a yearly basis and kind of get that information out to them. And we have all this, you know, information in our system, so we're, we'll be able to kind of play with it and try and fit everyone in, because we'll have, you know, the people that come every Friday from, you know, nine to five in the large meeting room. So we will kind of gather all of the information from the CFAL, from the community center, and then from outside organizations' reservations, and just, you know, fit as much as we can in there. And then just really, really trying to have great communication with, with the community about, you know, what's coming and what's going to happen.
So, so I understand that the staff controls the building and what, what goes on in the building. Has there been any information, outreach to the Parks and Recreation Commission, or do you intend to do that at some point?
Yes.
How is that working?
Yep, spoke with the chairperson this morning about it, and then it is on the agenda for the next, for the next Parks or Commission meeting at the end of the month.
Okay, just one other line of questioning, and then I'll turn it over back to the chair. This, I think, is directed either to the town manager or the finance director.
Before you leave, can I just ask, is the room dedicate, that you plan to dedicate to...
to adult daycare, the, the, the lower level room?
At this point, and nothing's set in stone, I think after we kind of plug everything in, but at this point, we're thinking the best is gonna be the serving room upstairs, next to the large meeting room, which is right off of our kitchenette. We feel that that is gonna be the most usable space for that program.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's fine, just.
Oh, may I just add one thing? Is that the, you know, Kurt talked about the nine-month period. We asked for that, because Amy and I both feel for both depart, both divisions of, of the department, that we have priorities. Some programs have priorities. The priority in, in her building are the kids. So, the good news is, the day program gets out at 2:30, long before the kids arrive, for the after-school-for-park program. The reason we asked for the nine months is because we do not want to have any interference whatsoever with the summer camp, so, which runs mid-June to mid, early August. So, we would like to be out before the camp comes in, and that was why we asked Kurt for that.
So, thank you. So, just another line of questioning, and I guess I'll direct this to the town manager or the finance director. It's going to be, if the town decides to go forward with this, it's going to be critical to understand what the funding sources are. And that's not something we're gonna resolve tonight, but I think it's important to, for the public to understand what the options are for funding. And we have previously, when we've presented articles to town meeting for, what was then called the Senior Center at Middle Road, or at 1610 Main Street, we presented it as a complete borrowing article. But we also have, at the present time, a blessing in that we have $11 million in free cash. And I know there are a lot of competing interests for using some of that money, including our capital budget, and we're not gonna resolve that tonight. We're gonna have further discussion on this at a future meeting, but we could also potentially take money from that. So I wondered, Jill, if you want to talk to that, what are the options so the public can understand it?
Sure.
And we're gonna want to hear back from the public and what they think about these things, too. Thank you.
And I'll, and I'll explain that, and also have Carrie Mazzaro, she's participating virtually. So at the December 10 meeting of the Select Board, we were presenting our preliminary capital plan, and what Carrie had done is programmed our free cash. So, one of the options is to pay free cash for the entire SEFL project, which we had currently programmed at $5 million, understanding that the estimates are below that. With that simple majority vote, no further action needed at the ballot. The other option we had presented, in an effort to program the 11 million of free cash, and also have funding for our capital program, our five-year capital program fiscal year 2026, which we funded from free cash. And then the other project that we need to discuss further would be the transfer station project. We had programmed $3 million of free cash, leaving a balance of free cash to cover any potential unexpected emergencies, maintain our reserves. So the other option that we presented also, back in December, was a potential free cash for a portion of the funds for the SEFL. And with that, we would be able to fund the transfer station program. If we funded a portion of it from the, from free cash, the prevailing vote would be a two-thirds majority, because we would have to bond and, and borrow the remainder of it. So what Carrie and I are trying to do, through looking at our free cash and understanding, probably this is the one year that we'll have this much, but also, we have other items that are targeted for funding that would be on the tax rate. So if we use all of the free cash for the SEFL program, the board would see a warrant article for the dredging covered by the tax rate. There's an ambulance also to be covered by the tax rate. So a lot of this is in that report, and this is something for our further discussion. So, again, it could be funded, 100% free cash, but it may trigger either a borrowing for the transfer station project, or a raise in appropriate of that $900,000.
Yeah, and I'll just make the general comment that, because we use the term free cash, that's the financial term, but it's not free money. It's, it's money that's already been appropriated and collected from the taxpayers.
And local receipts.
Yes.
Primarily local receipts are revenues that have come in, over and above.
And turnbacks.
And minor turnbacks for this person, yeah.
So the money, the money is there. If you borrow, obviously you're incurring debt service. And there are some projects that might, in general, be suitable for, to tap into free cash, but they're projects that, I think dredging, for example, in the past, we've funded that through appropriation. So, anyway, these are options, I think, I appreciate that background. I think it's important for the public to understand that, what, what the different options might be. Thank you.
Shereen?
Thanks, Mike. My first questions are for Leah, and, and it's about the programming. One of the things, you know, when you were talking about the timeline and whatever, do you anticipate that any of the services that you're doing would be lost in, in, you know, moving over to the community center?
That's a great question, and we've looked at all of our services, everything from foot care, to blood pressure, to outreach and everything else, and honestly, the answer is no. We, programs will probably be cut back a little, in fairness, because there's, you know, it's not gonna be ideal. I think, you know, Amy and I will both have to do some compromising on, on some things, so I can't expect all of our programs to, to still be there. But the services certainly, and there's no impact to services. I would just say, a little bit of the programming.
Thanks. Couple more questions, and then I have some questions for Kurt, too. With the, the senior day, are you anticipating you need different furnishings for, for the, the area, and do we have those available, or is that gonna be an added cost?
Including in our grant was $30,000 for new furnishings, which are all, which have, a lot of it has been ordered, not all of it. And it will, in its furniture that we feel could be moved seamlessly.
That's great.
Just with some muscle.
Good. The other question is about the timeline. And if, are you, you know, we're saying that nine months, and not to interfere with the other public service programs at the community center going into the summer. What's the plan B if that happens?
The plan B is, I'm hoping, you know, the, what we thought about is, maybe if it gets to that point, to discuss in advance with whoever was the winning, the winning bid, saying that if they got to a certain point and realized that that wouldn't be met, then, then that they would kind of try to, to make space at least for the day program, where the day program could move in there, and maybe one or two offices, so that there's no, very little impact to the community center programs.
So, would we be asking them to prioritize certain aspects of the project going?
I would, yes.
Okay, you would ask, okay, good. All right, well, thanks for that. And my question's for Kurt, and maybe this is town manager, whomever. With the, the cost estimates, you have project contingencies and escalations, one it's 10%, one at 5%. But giving material price fluctuations in the state of supply chain, and demand and everything, and even the possibility of tariffs coming forward, is that 10% to 15% sort of combined enough to anticipate any extra costs that might come forward?
We went over that with our estimator, we think so. And in the escalation number, I spoke to a couple of general contractors, just to make sure that, you know, what have you seen in the last two years? What have you seen in the last three months? And several have been talking about a, a point to a point and a quarter of escalation, like every three months. No. The tariffs are a different thing altogether. We're uncertain about really how that will impact it. But the estimator, it feels that his numbers are, are conservative. And there's not a whole lot more things that we're gonna sort of be able to add. And I wanted to go back and talk about the, the scheduling as well. We would put in the bid documents that the project has to be done in nine months. We understand that the COA got to come back.
Sure.
And the other thing we could do is either penalize the contractor, or incentivize the contractor to finish early. But one of the other things we're doing on another project is we're, we're doing some site work as a separate bid early, so that it reduces the length of the construction project. So, you know, could we build the parking lot on the right side in the summer months? You know, or maybe even sooner, could we do the drainage work and paving over there so that that was done? And not, so maybe two different bid packages, one site-related, one building, so that we wouldn't be, usually at the end, the landscaping, the site work is always a, you know, you're working really diligently to try to fit that in before the deadline. It'd be great to get some of these things done in advance of the building renovation project.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm curious, and I know I'm not putting you on the spot, because you're not the estimator, is how the industry is dealing with the potential for tariffs coming forward? And, and what that's gonna look like for, for construction projects for, in the coming years?
We haven't had any other projects where the estimate is, is actually carried a line item for it.
Yeah.
I think everybody is hoping that common sense prevails, and it really doesn't create a burden. But I've read articles that about 20% of building products in a, in a, in a home are from elsewhere. A lot of it from Canada. So hopefully, those, if tariffs happen, they'll be modest, and not greatly, greatly impact this project.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I, my reaction is pretty positive. I think Mr. Raiber took our suggestions, our input, to heart, and really came up with a plan that I think, after Leah's comments in particular, meet the programmatic needs of the, of the Center for Active Living, but at not, you know, at, at reasonable cost, if you will, knowing that the future's, you know, murky, if you will, with respect to the impact of tariffs, and any other escalations in costs, which have been considerable of late over the last couple of years. So I think, I mean, my bottom line here, it does, the building satisfy the needs of our programs, and I think it does. And thrilled to see the, the columns come out of the basement, those are totally dysfunctional, and appreciated the, the pictures of the current state of the building, which is, you know, frankly, abysmal. So we gotta do something. And I think this is a reasonable approach, and so I appreciate your hard work, and the hard work of the Council on Aging and of our staff. Also heartened to hear that it's a nine-month window, and I think, to your comment, I'd written down, there's gotta be contracts that we can craft with construction companies, et cetera, vendors, that have either penalties and/or incentives, and I prefer incentives in this case, because we really would like to see this project done within nine months. So I know there are outfits out there that'll work under those constraints, and we'll, we'll stratify, we'll time the different efforts so that, you know, that they meet the timeline. It's just, we, we gotta do it in nine months, and I, you know, that's what it's gotta be. So I think that incentives gotta be built in, and/or, and/or penalties if they don't, and then obviously have some kind of a plan B if, if they don't make, they don't make it. Not sure, I heard anything about any increased cost to the community center by, you know, the nine months of displacement. Sounds like you got a pretty good handle that everybody's gonna be doubling up office space, and you've already got furniture, et cetera, et cetera. So it doesn't sound as though there's a lot of incremental cost to moving the program for nine months. It's what, it's what I, what I took away. And then in terms of financing, I think if we kind of land on the project, we'll figure out the financing. There, it's not like we're bereft of, of options. We have, we have a few options, and I think we can put a mix together that kind of satisfies, satisfies the needs of, of, of the town without going crazy. So, so far, so, in my mind, in my, my voice, so far, so good, I really kind of like what I see. Dormers make a lot of sense. Really brought home with those pictures as well, the, the lack of height in those rooms. So anyway, I thought, thought that was very effective, and I appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work, there's a lot of hard work into this one. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I'm positive, just make one comment, so, and we didn't break it out clearly, and we will in a revised, but we, we are carrying some money for both. There's $25,000 in the IT line for temporary relocation, and $75,000 in the, in the soft cost items. Yeah, we did, we need to spell that out for things that we might run into, whether there, you know, when the moving, you know, maybe there's some additional Wi-Fi or computer needs, and then some additional furniture. And hopefully, anything that we would purchase, like we've done with previous projects, would be things of residual value, that they would remain, you know, with the building, or be able to go over to the new building. So, but if there might be some things, and again, as Amy and I think Leah pointed out, you know, still to really work out a lot of details, but there might be some furniture or items that are needed to, you know, when you start getting into the move. So, we'll break that out a little more clearly in the revised budget. But those, we did have those numbers in there, just not called out in the, the line item, so.
So I have a couple of questions, and then maybe a couple of comments. The one question that just occurred to me, Kurt, is, are you gonna be the architect here? Can you be, is this subject to a bid process, or can we, are we looking at the guy who's gonna do this?
Not yet.
Mike, I did have another question, sorry, but.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Clerk of the works, I didn't see.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay.
It's in line 23, OPM Services, yeah.
To answer your question, we engaged only for the concept and kind of schematic design study, and there was not a public designer selection process for that study, so there will have to be going forward. We will certainly apply.
I assume you'll apply.
Yeah.
And truthfully, I, I would say you'd have the inside track, but that, that probably answers the question I really had.
Great.
So, I, I, I just have two comments here, and I had a, a little bit longer commentary that I'm gonna pass on. I, I think that, you know, we, we've been at this since, longer than I'd like to think about, you know, I go back at least to two reports in 2016 and 2017, which the COA commissioned. I thought they were very good work. I thought they laid out what was needed. We couldn't persuade two-thirds of the voters to approve that, and so we're here where we are. And I think, I commend you and the team as having done the best that could be done with what we have to work with. I, I think we're being asked to, to, to answer a couple of questions here that are not easy to answer. One is, is this good enough? And, and, and two, can we, can we, is, is what we're getting, is, is it, is this an amount of money that we should be spending on what we're getting? And then finally, can we, you know, count on the fact, or do we have reasonable confidence that the number isn't going to grow to something that had we known sitting here now, we would have said, that's too much, we should do something else? I'm, I'm not comfortable with the answer to any of those questions, but on the other hand, I'm even less comfortable, and I really can't look at the COA and our seniors and say, you know, send them home with nothing. And so I guess, you know, where I am is, something's better than nothing. I'm not as optimistic as my friend, Mr. Dykens. I, I think this is gonna be a tough row, and I, I really do think that it's important that you're, you've put this together with the COA and the staff, and, and I think you need to be there to make sure it happens, however it gets, gets done. So I'm reluctantly a supporter, and I'll be happy to do anything I can to help. I, I, I think that the issue, as Jeff said, of how we pay for it is a separate one, it doesn't have anything to do with, if this is a good project, then we ought to do whatever it takes to get it done. And if it's not, the fact that there's $11 million, that we just won a lottery and have $11 million to spend is not the, is not the answer. So I think that's a separate question, as, as Jeff, as Jeff said, so. Thanks for your presentation. Anything from the COA? Anything from the COA?
I have a couple of thoughts. And my first thought is that, as Jeff said, you know, we're looking at a nine-month project, but we're not just looking at a nine-month project. We're looking at the particular nine months between the middle or end of August to the middle of June. And that puts a further constraint, because if we go to the annual town meeting, excuse me, I've been sick, I'm losing my voice. If we go to annual town meeting in May, and that's then only a couple of months before we would have to get the project started to get it into that particular nine-month period. So I'm concerned that if we can't get this all wrapped up in the next few months, then we're looking at next year, you know, August of 2026 is a beginning date. And that's, that's a big concern. And kind of a related thing is all of this business about everyone being in the community center together. I applaud your willingness to be shoulder to shoulder for that many months, but it concerns me for the participants, concerns me for the staff, it concerns me for anyone, you know, particularly the people in the adult daycare. So, you know, that kind of makes my stomach turn a little bit, but if that's the best we can do. My, my personal feeling is that I know how important this is to Leah and her staff. And so if you tell me it's gonna be okay, then I, I trust that. But, but I feel for you guys, I really do. I think it's, it's gonna be, I've been through things like this in my professional life and it's, it's not easy, it's not fun. So, you know, those are kind of my two, my two overriding thoughts.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I could just speak to that. So with the concern, Kurt and I were just, just talking, so again, we understand that there's a very, very tight schedule because as was eloquently pointed out, it's not only the nine months of construction, but we've got the three months. So we would need to start, you know, upon approval, getting right into design. So we would have three months to have this, you know, out on the street, as they say, for bidding in August. So that's, it is an aggressive target, but that's to keep it also within the one-year estimating period.
Well, I think a real key issue, looking way back, before the pandemic, we had some terrific luncheons that were highly popular within entertainment. And then we looked at the number of people that were turned down, which is very discouraging. I'm just wondering, on the multipurpose room downstairs, how much of an increase is that?
The room is about 30% larger.
Okay.
But with the column gone, in a different setup of furniture, we think we can double the occupancy, because the columns are real obstruction now.
So you think you could go from 30, 30 to 60?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's terrific. And also, it's very creative the way you've increased the parking. I mean, obviously, it's not, that's not easy. But the multipurpose room is the key, because that's where exercise activities, luncheons, larger meetings take place. And if you have to turn down 20 or 30 people every time you have a major event, then you fail. So I think you've done a great job with that.
Well, I am really, really impressed by the amount of work and dedication that the town, the staff, volunteers, everybody has put into trying to create a solution to a problem that we actually have here in Chatham. I can't remember any project that has been put through the wringer as much as this particular project has. And the other thing is, is that if the COA was going to continue to use the building, we would have to do at least that minimal amount of work that was never done, that comes in at around a million dollars. So it seems kind of crazy to put a million dollars into something that doesn't serve the needs. So we can't predict the future, but I think, I don't think how we could have thought this through any more than it has been. And I think it's time to do something. And one last thing, I just read recently that in 1930, the Empire State Building was built in one year. So I think maybe we can do this in nine months.
Get that contract.
I think Ann said it well. Everyone's worked really hard. I really am proud of how, you know, we've looked at, listening to the town that says they didn't really have the willingness to build a whole new facility. And then this group came back with, we're just asking what we need to run our programs effectively, safely, and also to increase them. And I think that is incredible. And I would be very disappointed if we don't get this, you know, for them. Because, I mean, I did the timeline and the history and we've been talking about this project since 1990, when they built, got the first home, you know, the original building. And even then, they, you know, they took it with a crack in the foundation because this was the best they could get. So I'm hoping that we could really, you know, do what we need to do for the community, because it certainly will meet the needs of the people who use it. And those same people love that building and love that location.
Go ahead, Ben. No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I would like to thank Kurt, Ann, Leah, and Terry, and Jill, and Kathy, and everyone who worked on this project. I worked a little bit myself, but not a lot. And I think you did a tremendous job, Kurt, of, of meeting the needs of the Chatham Center for Active Living. I, I'm very impressed and I would feel very badly if you were not the architect on the project. So as Mike said, you do have the, the inside track. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. I don't have any questions. You've already answered mine before. Thank you.
So I'm gonna observe a little bit of a partition here, if you will, sorry for the term, and open it up for the other half of this, which is the, the public forum, if you will, and invite questions, comments, thoughts, whatever, from those in the room and/or those who are online. So come on down. Yep, yep, Ann.
Just a couple of questions.
Can you tell everybody your name, please?
Ann Thompson, Chatham. I've been following this forever, it seems. And I thank all of you, because this has been a group effort, I know. And thank you very much to Catalyst and Kurt, because being able to take an elderly building and reconfigure it is much harder than sitting in front of a computer and making a new building. And it requires a lot more inspiration, a lot more talent. And it's, it's happened. And I think it's wonderful. I prob, I would have supported even more addition. But my question is, so 60, 60 people would then become a possible maximum capacity for the main room, which is the dining room at the moment, kind of?
Correct.
And then upstairs, in the media room, if you do both dormers on both sides, do you, how much would you be able to add to that capacity?
Well, to be, there's already a dormer on the left side.
Right.
Or the south side. And so we're proposing the, it's a very modest square foot addition, but it does increase the room, again, by almost a third, because that sloped roof, just, you walk one step into that and you hit your head. So that area is only about 400 square feet, but divided by 20 is, you know, another 20 people in that room.
Okay.
So that occupancy is also gonna be able to grow. And it's gonna have some more windows and better daylight, ventilation.
Yeah. There's no question, our house has that kind of shed dormer. And it gives you the sensation of more space than you're really getting even. It's a visual thing, but it also makes you feel like you're in a bigger room. I just have one other very quick thought. Down below, in the senior daycare, what, what are you sort of gearing up for in terms of the capacity for that? I mean, I know there's supposed to be X number of employees for each person, but approximately, how many people would fit into that space?
I think Leah's gonna remind us about the program and how many people they can serve.
Hi, Ann. So the maximum amount that we can have right now would be 12. If we had the whole downstairs, we would not only go from two to four days a week, but we could probably do about 25.
Great. Then just one other toss-in thought. Based on the fact that the senior daycare is now on the lower level, is it possible? At one point, there was a plan that had a little kitchenette. And that's, I think, been eliminated, which certainly eliminates a lot of cost and some maintenance. But is there any possibility you could actually create, dare I say, a dumb waiter that would be able to take food from the kitchen downstairs very effectively? Because it's mostly just, what, coffee or light lunch or something? It's just a thought.
It's a, it's a great thought. I'll let Kurt address that one, but we do have, it's, it's a small snack and a, and a lunch. So, and we do, we would have the elevator right there, too, so we could also do it that way. But I'll let Kurt address that.
Just a toss-out.
Yeah, a dumb waiter is certainly possible, but it does take up a little bit of area on those two floors. And in the addition next to the kitchen, it certainly could be accommodated, but the budget does include an upgrade of the elevator itself. And with a full kitchen there, we kind of made the assumption early on that meals, hot meals, if they were prepared in the building, would be in the kitchen, put on a cart, put in the elevator, brought down for lunch service.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm Ann Dixon and I live in Chatham, West Chatham. I gotta say, I was a little wary when I came in the room today. And because many, many years ago, when I first moved here, this was a topic. And this building was approached and it was like, oh my gosh, there's not enough parking, there's not this, blah, 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 blah. And then obviously, we know the history that's happened since then. But I have to say, I, I will tell you, I am a convert for this renovation. I think, yes, you've done a fantastic job. I love the exuberance of the young ones here. I can say that. I can say that. I'm a baby boomer. I do have a few questions or, you know, I don't know. But anyway, I'm disappointed in the very little green space being used for parking, but I get why it has to happen. So there's really, it's an area of no green space, even in that whole area. Okay, all right. My second thing is, Leah, you had mentioned that currently 23% of the year-round population is utilizing this. And I happen to be 68 years old. I'm in the middle of the baby boomers, 10 years in front of me and 10 years behind me. What, does anyone have an idea of maybe how long this will be useful to us, based on the growing numbers of aging baby boomers? I would be just kind of curious about that. Not to say that we shouldn't do this, because there are needs right now. With our current population and over the next few, or how many years, I don't know. I'd be curious with that. Because there was a survey that had gone out, that 50, 60-somethings did participate in, I believe. So based on that, I just think it's a curious thing, because I'm a numbers person. But in 10 years, I'll be 78. How old are you?
Kurt's a demographer as well as an architect.
Yeah. I don't, I don't really understand the demographic trends in Chatham, but I know that overall the Cape is not getting more dark hair. And young people are leaving. I understand that. We did not do a kind of a study that was forward-looking into how many, you know, kind of users we would have in five or 10 years. We really were just trying to maximize the usability of the existing square foot space and then, you know, frankly, minimize the addition space. But trying to, you know, increase the availability and population of the programs that the building can host.
Yes. And I understand, you know, that, because this will definitely make a difference. I mean, I've done many events for a different organization outreach and yes, I know the crampedness of it. And this will definitely address those needs. I just think there might be, there could be a concern going forward, you know, just giving a heads up from voters. I don't know. But yes, so I'm a convert and I will be a good proponent of this and I hope it does go through.
As a numbers person, you, perhaps you know that you're, you're just about the median age here in Chatham, Ann. Anybody else? Yeah, oh, Mike, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Michael Berry. I'm president of the Friends Board, Friends of the Council on Aging. And I'm speaking for myself right now. What impressed me about this presentation compared to the one in June is that by bumping out that room on the first floor, which we call the dining room, that does make that room much more usable. And also up above, on the second level, the room that has the low ceilings. So I think, and I read in the presentation materials, that the usable square footage in this building as proposed is only about 750 square feet less than the last iteration we had with 1610. So I think you're a really good use of the, of the floor space by making these modifications. The one question I did have, kind of a minor one, but as far as sharing office space in the community center for 10 months, nine months, 10 months, whatever, did anybody look at possibly like renting trailers for office space? Because I was involved in a project years ago where that worked out beautifully. I don't know what the cost was or whether it was even investigated, but I'd just like to know if you looked at that.
Yeah, that's something we did talk about as a kind of sub-options or options B and C, but right now, we're really looking into this cohabitation location. But that is something, too, that, you know, again, carrying some of those funds, if, if aspects of that don't work, you know, to get a fully outfitted trailer to rent them and for a short duration, they're, they're not that expensive. So we've had experience with those and especially if we're not, if we're using them just for office space, we don't have to bring them up to a lot of different code levels and ramps and things that we had to do for our other relocations when we were having the public visiting. But we could do that for office space if that doesn't work or as we, again, drill down more into the, the real logistics or problems with that. That would be a contingency that we, we have talked about, to place a trailer somewhere in the vicinity that, you know, they could be close to the, to the, to the programs. So that's definitely something that, again, carrying in that number for the outfitting
Anybody else? Is that Robin? Hi, Robin.
Robin Zbrat. I am also on the board of the Friends, but I'm speaking as someone that's lived here and been part of the COA since the 70s, when my dad started some of these efforts. But my biggest concern is not about what we've got as the plan, because I'm so excited that we've finally come to something that maybe all of us can agree on, because it's been so many, so many painful years that we have been waiting for the town to come forward and take care of the elderly. My problem is the contingency plan, if we go ahead and have this timeline, being in the construction company business and the architectural business, I don't see how we're going to get the plans done and get the project done in the amount of time that we have. And what is the contingency plan for the community center if we go over? Because there's a lot of people in this town that not only use the COA, they use the community center. And there's a lot of people that need to be notified of the displacement that they might have, and kids that use it in the summer. And I am just really concerned with the timeline.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's an excellent point. And I-
And I, I'd say that just as a practical matter. Um, and I think we have to be ready not only for planning, but also just for the, uh, the friction with the public that goes on every day. Um, you know, when, when people are not where they think they should be or not getting what they think they should, or something isn't anticipated or whatever, and that's a, that's going to be a real challenge. So, um, not that it can't be done, but it will be a challenge. I agree with Robin. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick one. Paula Wiseman Kendrick Road. Just another quick thought on that timeline concerns is, you know, of course, we're in Chatham and we're in New England, you know, they may need to pad a little bit because of even the weather, you know? If you're going August to May, you know, we don't know what the weather's going to be around here. You could bat your eyelashes and it, we, we have a six-foot snowstorm that slows everybody down. So there might be consideration into padding that timeline. And I, I agree, I think this, it's, it's a good, you guys have done a great job pulling it together, and I think you'll get some real positive reactions from this. I think it's, it looks really great and I congratulate you all on that. It's great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Jill? Oh, is that Bob Lear?
I think it says Rick.
Rick Levitt, Rick Levitt, sorry.
Thank you, Mike. This, this has been a great presentation. I, you all know me as a solid supporter for a CFAL or a senior center. This proposal brings Chatham into today's world of a majority elderly community. That's what we are. And you made that point just a moment ago, so I'm totally in favor of this. Let's go forward with it. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else? Um, I think unless somebody has anything else from either board, I think we could, oh, yeah, go ahead, Dean.
I guess we're back, we're back to the boards now. So I just wanted to make some general comment. As many people know, I've been the liaison from this board to that board for the last 10 years, these past 10 years. Uh, and we've all seen the ups and downs of, um, the attempt to get a new CFAL. Um, and, um, it was my initiative to bring this to the, to the public attention, and I appreciate the support that my fellow board members have given toward, um, presenting this as a potential option for everybody to consider, and nobody's really made their minds up yet because we haven't taken any votes and we're not going to take any tonight. But I, I look upon this as a, as, as a politically feasible initiative. Is it ideal? I think many of us felt 1610 was probably closer to an ideal, including myself. But we have to face the, the political reality of being able to get something through town meeting and with the voters that they, they're comfortable with. And I think this proposal goes a long way toward doing that. And, um, I expect that at a future board meeting in the very near future, because we have to plan for town meeting and prepare articles, we'll have some discussion about whether the select board wants to go forward with this. And I certainly feel that the comments we've gotten tonight, being so positive about it, um, and I hope, I think the chairman's going to invite further comment to be submitted subsequent to this meeting tonight. We'll look forward to hearing what, what folks have to say about that. And we'll regroup and we'll determine whether to put an article forward. And I hope in that discussion, I, I appreciate what the chair has said about, um, funding, and Mr. Dykens has commented on, commented on, on that as well, but I do think that's an integral part of the article, how this is going to be funded. And, um, so we'll take a look at that. And I, I want to thank everybody for coming and voicing their, their comments on it as well as other members of the board. I just wanted to mention one thing, I don't know if everybody knows this, but, um, Mr. Raiber is, was the architect for the, the Eldridge Garage Gas Station, which is a neat little building. If you've gone and looked at it, you can see the quality of the work that was done there. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting this on the agenda. Thank you to, uh, my fellow board members and to the Council on Aging board members and to the town manager and her staff and to Mr. Raiber and his firm for all the work that has led up to this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, um, as, as Dean just indicated, I am going to, the, the staff memo mentioned, invite comment from the public. Anybody who has something else to say about this is welcome to do that. Um, and we will have a, a short discussion item on the agenda at the meeting next week on the 14th. Um, and, um, I, I see however we have somebody, is that Stephen? Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll recognize you just before we adjourn for the evening.
Uh, thank you, Mike. Stephen Daniel here. I'm just curious, I think a question for Terry, uh, and it's been alluded to by a couple of speakers tonight. Do we have a sense of what the remaining useful life of this structure would be post renovations?
I think I defer to Kurt on that, but I mean, we're, we're probably looking, I'll defer to Kurt on his architectural expertise.
Yeah, well, the, the project considers, um, an upgrade to the elevator, um, which is probably approaching the end of its useful life or, or past it. Um, and so that'll be, you know, a brand new elevator going 30-plus years. Most of the HVAC systems in the building will have been converted to electric heat pump systems and be, um, in the 15 to 20-year range before they would need maintenance or replacement. But, um, we're touching most of the square footage in this renovation addition. Um, and I would say that this building will be, um, certainly useful, um, for another 40 years easily.
Okay, terrific. That's very helpful, thank you. I applaud the work that's been done to date on this, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, that provokes a question for me, which we hear in other contexts all the time, and if this is a, an irrelevancy, feel free to tell me, but has any consideration been given to, um, ma, making the, the building either solar panel ready or, or actually considering solar panels? The orientation of the building is not ideal, um, but where we would be creating some new roof lines on the south end, it is possible that they could be added. I'm sure that the existing building roof may need a little bit of reinforcement, um, but certainly the additions could be designed to support a solar panel system. And we can provide raceways or conduits inside or outside the building to accommodate those to be added in the future. The biggest thing is like the mechanical room in the basement doesn't have a whole lot of room for those systems, um, but we could find a spot for it. If you've thought about it and rejected it, that's fine, I just wondered if you'd thought about it.
And, and we could consider also, you know, canopies as well in, in the parking areas. We're, we're changing that, it's another opportunity for.
Okay.
Meeting them, so.
We'll leave it at that.
Again, in the design process, as Kurt said, you know, we could make it to max accommodation or maybe, um, an addition small on the, the north, excuse me, the east side of the elevator.
Right. And would the town want to use the power onsite?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, we, it could be connected to the grid versus connected to the building. So it'd still benefit the town. There's a couple of different ways to do it. Yeah, okay. All right, I will let you adjourn your board.
Uh, excuse me, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead, Stan.
I just want to make one comment.
Yeah.
I've talked to, uh, three people who happen to be in the swimming club up at the Woodlands that I get, that I go to. Um, and each one of them has been dynamically negative on all the votes that we've had for senior centers. And one in particular said, when I asked him, well, what do you think about improving the current senior center? He said, yeah, that's a good idea. Then I just threw out the comment that, well, how much do you think we ought to spend? He said, well, we could, we should spend about $6 million. And I noticed tonight, we, we've had people talk that have been negative in the past and are, and are very positive now. So I, hopefully this is some kind of a trend.
Okay, thank you.
I, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Ann?
Aye.
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 Ann, I'll take one from our board.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And Mr. Shell says aye. We are adjourned at 7:10. Thank you, everybody. Good night, Chatham.